What tonight is really all about is hearing from these candidates so that you, the voter, may learn who they are, what they're about, what they stand for, and whether or not they have earned your support and your vote. And as to the candidates, thank you guys for being here. While the questions I give may be different from each other, you will all be asked at least one question from the following three categories: Getting to Know You, Politics, and Economics. You will all be able to speak on your ideas and what you pose to the voters here tonight within those three categories. And a couple of shout outs here I want to give. Carthage Water and Electric, thank you for letting us use this space. And I know that, yes. Yes, they have been very kind to allow us to use this tonight, and I believe they also provided some water, so shout out to them. And also, candidates, for your information in terms of how these microphones work, there's a little button in the front. If you see the red light on, that means the microphone is on. If the red light is off, then it is off. Excellent. Are we all good with the rules for tonight in terms of decorum? Great, in that case, we will get started. We're going to start off not with a question, but just introductions here. So if we can go down the line, candidates, give us your name and what ward you are running for.
I'm Derek Peterson. I'm running in Ward 1.
Lori Lees, Ward 2.
Be sure, sorry, be sure to turn the mic on and then speak directly into it if you don't mind.
Lori Lees, Ward 1. I mean 2.
That was a pop quiz.
I just wanted to see.
Dustin Edge, Ward 3.
Tom Barlow, Ward 4.
Mark Elif incumbent, Ward 5.
Excellent, thank you guys for being here. Oh, yes. Is she, is she in? Excellent, Jana, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you so much for accommodating me. I'm Jana Schram, and I'm running in Ward 5.
Excellent, thank you, Jana. We're going to start off tonight's questions with the following question from the Getting to Know You category. Now, for this first round, you are all going to receive the same question. You have two minutes or less to answer this question. Once the bell and/or timer rings, that means your two minutes is up, and please cease your comments immediately. The more, the less time we go over, the more time we have for questions. So we want to get, we want to be able to let you guys answer as many questions as we can. So, starting off tonight, in two minutes or less, please give us your background and tell us what inspired you to run for city council. And we're going to start with Derek Peterson.
All right, thanks. So yeah, I'm Derek Peterson. My background, if you will, I guess, is I've, I've born and bred in Carthage. I'm 31 years old. I went to Carthage schools, growing up, up until undergraduate. And really what inspired me to run is that when I graduated from high school and went into college and then law school after that, I lived in Kansas City, Missouri, and then Little Rock, Arkansas. And spending about 10 years-ish in those two places combined, it really only showed me that Carthage really is the best community for, for so many various reasons. And I knew I wanted to move my family back here and raise my family here so that my family could have those same experiences, education and so forth, the close-knit community that we are. A big part of that was that because Carthage has given me so much, I wanted to give back as much as I could as well to our community. So even before, when, when my wife and I were living in Little Rock, I said, you know, we're going to move back, we'll figure out the time, but when we do, I'm going to run for city council. Now, that was always the plan, and then we moved back and, and you know, I got more in tune with, with the community and constituents and realized that there are a lot of pressing issues, particularly at this, this stage of Carthage's history. So it went from me wanting to, to simply give back and use my efforts, knowledge, and whatever assets I can provide Carthage. That then morphed into, I really think there's a true need for, for refreshing voices, thoughts, and approaches to things. So that's that.
Thank you for that, Derek. We also have in Ward 1, an individual, Brandy Enzor, is running. Unfortunately, she could not be here tonight, but she has pre-written comments here that I will read for you, and I will try and get as much of it in, in the two minutes as possible.
I'm Brandy Enzor. I've been a lifelong Carthage resident and have lived in Ward 1 for 25 years between three different neighborhoods. I have been in education for 21 years and currently teach special education in the Osho. For the last four years, I have operated a flea market-based resale business with 13 locations between Oklahoma, Carthage, Springfield, and Branson. I'm a 1994 graduate of our very own Carthage High School. I received my Bachelor of Science in Education from Missouri Southern State University in 1998. Then I completed my Master of Science in Education through Arkansas State University in 2013. I originally ran for a city council because I wanted to make a difference. Now that I have my first term coming to an end, and it is time to ask the voters to allow me to continue serving them, I have become even more invested in seeing Carthage thrive. There are exciting things going on in Carthage. There are improvements in the parks with the new playgrounds and restrooms, thanks to a grant from the McKeon Brooks Regional Hospital Trust, new business coming to town, a new industrial park to provide space for new industries, which was created through a partnership with several area agencies, and many sidewalk and road projects that help Carthage attract new residents as the area business grows. We have an amazing little town, and I truly enjoy helping make the decisions that continue to provide a quality experience for residents while looking out for the best interests of future generations of Carthage citizens.
Thank you, Brandy Enzor, running for Ward 1. We will now move on to Lori Lees. Lori, briefly tell us about yourself and what inspired you to run for city council? You have two minutes.
Well, I'm a proud citizen of Carthage. I have lived here all my life. I'm a mother. I have a wife, a grandmother of 13 children, grandchildren, and I work here at our Carthage Hospital. And through working at the hospital, I think I've even grown to love our community and not take things for granted that we've all had at our disposal here in this town, at our disposal. I go to other communities, and we have something different here, and we are blessed. And I want to be a part of making things grow and be better. I'm thankful for all the experiences that I have had in my manager role at the hospital. I have learned many things that will aid me, I think, in helping to serve in our community. The reason I decided to run for the position is my family kind of gets tired of me griping about streets, this, that, the other, and they just said, why don't you do something about it? You know, you can, you can make a difference. And it doesn't have to be up here, even if I were not going to be serving for city, for our city in this capacity. I plan on putting my feet in and jumping in and helping wherever else I can because I believe in this community. And I just love, love helping wherever I can, wherever I'm needed, and I love this town. And I think it's that one of the questions that I'm just jumping to that little part says, why would you be the best candidate? I may not be the best candidate, but my love of this community, I will do my very best to help love this community and work with everyone. On another note, I have to say, probably 50% of you in here, I enjoy having lunch with you every single day at the hospital. So it's pretty, pretty nice, though, to see so many familiar faces that come and eat with us out there every day. But if you can feel that community spirit in that spot where we're all having lunch, that's the kind of community we should have.
Thank you, Lori. Dustin Edge of Ward 3, briefly tell us about yourself and what inspired you to run for city council?
My history in Carthage began in 2000 when my mother and I moved to McGregor Street. At that time, I actually started working part-time for the city on the golf course operations. I spent eight years in that role, and I got to know various groups and the regulars out there, including chamber golf events, rotary events as well, and just really enjoyed the community. And my, my wife and I ultimately in 2010 purchased our forever home here in Carthage and have been here ever since. We love the community and, and really just wanting to offer my background to, for betterment of the, the citizens of Carthage.
Excellent, thank you, Dustin. Next, we have Robin Blair of Ward 3, who is also running, but unfortunately she could not make it here. She is teaching a class at Pitt State currently, but she did have these comments that I will read now. My name is Robin Blair, and I live in Ward 3 with my husband and two young children. I initially ran for city council two years ago because I wanted to support the many family-oriented initiatives that were already in motion, including park renovations. We moved to the area in 2019 for the schools, and I was immediately impressed with the community engagement and city, and what the city has to offer. I value public service and enjoy working with others who care about our town, too. I want to continue working on projects that improve the lives of citizens and attract other families to our area so that our city has a vibrant future. That was Robin Blair of Ward 3. Next, Tom Barlow of Ward 4, briefly tell us about yourself and what inspired you to run for city council? You have two minutes, sir.
Thank you. I came here in 2010, retired from education in Oklahoma. So yes, boomer sooner. But I, I'm sorry about my sinuses. I have absolutely fallen in love with it here. We have, our first grandchild was up in this area, and that's, that was the draw. Now, well beyond one grandchild, but absolutely love this area. Some of you may know me as Dr. Barlow if you've heard kids or grandkids talking about me. My first year, I was Assistant Principal at Steadly and at Columbian. So some people who were at Columbian had exposure there, absolutely loved, excuse me, my year at Columbian. And then the second year and the rest of the 13 years when I was Principal at Steadly, absolutely love this town. This, Carthage has been so good to me and my family. I believe strongly in giving back. I believe in public service. I've thought about it for a few years now, and having just retired after 45 years or so, I mean, however, back, I had an Afro when I started, that's how long ago. But it's been a good run, but I thought now perhaps retired, I have a chance to do this and try to make a positive difference for a town and a people I dearly love. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Tom Barlow. We now have Mark Elif of Ward 5. Briefly tell us about yourself and what inspired you to run for city council?
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the Chamber for hosting this forum. Very much appreciate it. Said, I'm the fifth Ward Councilman presently. I am also the Mayor Pro Tem, Chair of Public Safety, Vice Chair of Budget Ways and Means Committee, and liaison to many of the city committees, as well as some of the other council members. Born and raised here in Carthage, officially moved here to Carthage when I was about 10 years old from Joplin. I lived in Booneville with my family for about five years when I was President and CEO of UMB Bank in Booneville, and then had the opportunity to come back home and definitely wanted to come back. I have a Bachelor of Science Business Administration from Missouri Southern State University, also Southwest Graduate School of Banking through Missouri Methodist, or excuse me, Southern Methodist University out of Dallas, Texas. I'm retired after 34 years. I did not have an Afro, though, at the time. 10 years also as President and CEO of the Carthage Chamber of Commerce, and eight years of that 10, I was the Economic Development Director for the city of Carthage. My wife and I, Vicki, been married 44 years. We have a daughter, Jennifer Nichols, lives here in town, and son Jonathan, who passed away from cancer back in 2005. We have two wonderful granddaughters, Shay and Brooke Gaddis, and Shay's here tonight and appreciate her being here. Ask who I'm serving. I have served for the, in the community events and many civic activities my entire life. And because I feel that I want to give back to the community that's given to me, and I'm very happy to do that. I was elected to the council two years ago and to serve the citizens of Carthage, and I am wanting to, and I have made a commitment to continue my service. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Mark Elif of Ward 5. Jana Schram of Ward 5, briefly, briefly tell us about yourself and what inspired you to run for city council? You have two minutes.
Again, thank you for having me, and thank you for making the accommodation for me to virtually join this forum. I am working right now in Las Vegas for me, but it's a thing I go to every year, and it's a big opportunity for my company. My husband and I live on Grand Avenue. We chose Carthage. We weren't from here, but we don't want to leave. We've lived all over the country with our four children, and we have grown to love Carthage and all of its people and all it brings to us as a family. I love this community. I am running for, oh, let me tell you a little bit about my business. I am a sales rep for manufacturers to large retailers, and I also have a, a couple companies in Australia that I am their national salesperson for that. So I have some big responsibilities. I'm a big picture person. I am very creative, but I love to use my resources to solve problems. I'm running for council because there was an issue with Carthage Water and Electric. I, this was not on my radar, like everybody else, it was not on my radar to run for council. But there, with the issue this past summer with Carthage Water and Electric, someone said, what are you going to do about it? And I became active. I think that there's a lot of things in Carthage that could be better, and I think once we're through this area, that, that things will be better and Carthage will be in a better light. And I'm, I'm proud to serve Carthage as their councilperson for Ward 5.
Jana Schram of Ward 5, thank you. We're going to be going back to Derek Peterson of Ward 1. Derek Peterson, how would you support our local, our local existing businesses? And furthermore, how would you encourage their growth? You have two minutes.
Sure, so from a general perspective on this, I really think it's best to amplify and, and provide resources to some of these partner groups that the city has in place already. So for example, Ms. Reams here with the Carthage Chamber of Commerce doing a phenomenal job with the Carthage Development and Economic Committee, Jeff Meredith, Vision Carthage, Leanna Canfield, and Hispanic Connection, Maria Marquin and Maria Sanchez. And then finally Tourism, Jen Kirby. All these people are in fantastic, well-qualified leaders of these groups. And I believe if we're able to, like I said, amplify these groups, provide funds and resources accordingly, and then quite frankly, let them use their knowledge and expertise to find what those needs are, come to the, the council for those various needs or resources, funding, et cetera. But really, really rely on our, our strategic partners that we have in place because, like I said, these, these leaders we have currently are fantastic, and they're well-suited to, to drive growth in local business in their respective areas. You know, you look at tourism, you know, bringing people to Carthage, obviously using the local businesses, that's a driver there. Obviously, the Economic Development Committee and, and Vision Carthage beautifying our city, again, bringing more people and spending time in Carthage. All these groups, we can really, really lean on to, to help us in that regard.
Excellent, thank you, Derek Peterson of Ward 1. The next question goes to Brandy Enzor of Ward 1. Our community has a very low stock of single-family and multifamily housing and need more childcare for families. These limitations impact our workforce, and many businesses struggle to fill positions within their companies. What do you think the city's role is in helping solve these issues? And do you feel it is a top priority? And this is her pre-written answer. I believe housing and childcare are important, but I believe the responsibility of the city is to enact ordinances to change zoning where needed, sign off on HUD grants for developers, and work to provide low-cost utilities and taxes so that facility expenses are not a hardship on anyone hoping to open a daycare or provide, or provide in-home childcare. I do not believe that it is the responsibility of the city to open a childcare facility or to build the houses, but I believe that we should work with anyone who is taking the initiative on these causes and support them when they are doing things that will only make Carthage better. That was Brandy Enzor of Ward 1. Lori Lees of Ward 2. Each year during the budget process, more money is requested by our city department heads than the city can fund. Typically speaking, there are more needs than there are funds. As an elected official, how will you decide funding priorities within the city? You have two minutes.
I was talking to my husband about this, and I'm like, well, isn't it the same with every business you know of? I know that at the hospital, we're taught to ask for money for our needs, for our wants, for everything, and then cross our fingers and hope we get our needs. But then if you can't get your needs, you've got to seek elsewhere, whether it be fundraisers, whether it be grants, other, other ways to get those things. I know there's not always enough to meet even the needs in like a hospital or a city, and there's not. And, but we have to look at the big picture, and we have to communicate well with each entity that's requesting the funds. We have to know the needs of our community. Communication is key for all of us. And in sitting in a lot of the meetings, I know that, I think that communication would bring a lot more things together. So we all have to communicate and work together to, to work at the big picture and make sure that we're all on the same page, making sure we stretch every single penny we can, making sure we get the best deal on things. We need to take care of, of as much as we can and keep seeking donations and keep seeking support and grants. And there are grants out there and things, and, and I think we need to work hard at, at trying to make our city be able to stay within our means, but also to be able to keep growing. And if we keep growing, then we're going to continue and we'll succeed.
Thank you, Lori Lees of Ward 2. Dustin Edge of Ward 3, what are your top three priorities for the city of Carthage? And how do you plan to address these priorities? You have two minutes.
The first priority I have, I actually mentioned in the council meeting last night, I believe we need to stream all council-related meetings. And the answer I received last night was that it's a staffing issue because the meetings happen after hours. Streaming those meetings is very important because that's where all of the council bills originate, and those conversations around that are really important, and we miss those conversations unless you're able to attend those meetings. And sometimes it's extremely hard to decipher the minutes because they don't, don't go into real detail on what those conversations actually entail. The second option, I also mentioned in our council meeting last night when I spoke, is to explore the numerous options for constituent engagement. We do have something in place now. It actually took me about 10 minutes to track it down on the website today. I, I think having something more readily available and usable for residents to communicate with council members is something that, that would vastly improve that communication piece and allow us to actually know what the collective voice and collective concerns are for the citizens. And then finally, fiscal responsibility. I, I think we need to improve the overall budgeting process, and quite frankly, I do this on a daily basis in my current employment for a company that has $2 billion in revenue on an annual basis. So my exposure to that, I think, really relays into the role of a council member. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dustin Edge of Ward 3. Robin Blair of Ward 3, what would your plan to collaborate with other agencies such as Carthage Chamber, Vision Carthage, Hispanic Connection, and other local nonprofits to address common challenges? And her pre-written answer is as follows. These partnerships are already well-established, and I support continuing in the direction they are already headed. Many challenges in the city cannot be addressed by the city alone, and our community is significantly improved by these nonprofit entities. Thank you for that, Robin Blair of Ward 3. Tom Barlow of Ward 4, how do you propose to fund and implement the city's infrastructure needs such as roads, utilities, bridges, so forth? You have two minutes.
That is a good question. What I know of all, and Ms. Lees and I were talking about this before we started, that we just, we have a lot to learn in terms of what all the needs are. I know last night at, one of the more profound needs, that is the city's responsibility, are the bridges on North Garrison. And it's not just going to cost thousands, and it's not just going to cost millions. We're into tens of millions of dollars that it's going to take to repair those. And it's a difficult decision, but it's, it's our responsibility to do that. Where the funds will come from is going to be a difficult process. I think when we look at funding, safety has to be considered first and foremost, and then it is our responsibility to prioritize after that. And those are the difficult decisions, some of the difficult decisions that a city council must do. Not going to be easy. That's one thing hopefully that I've got a little experience in, having been an administrator for a few decades, is having made some decisions, tried to make the right decisions for the right reasons, even when they're difficult. And the city needs us to be able to do that. In terms of the answers for how I will find the funding, it's going to be we, and we need to do that. That's not me trying to put off an answer. I really don't have an answer for exactly how we're going to be able to do that, except that it is our responsibility, and we've got to find a way to do that together.
Thank you, Tom Barlow of Ward 4. Mark Elif of Ward 5, it is important to ensure the city provides essential public services efficiently. How would you ensure that this continues? You have two minutes.
The way the system works is that the mayor appoints members to various committees, both on the council as well as on community committees. The city, as has been said before, does operate by the committee, and it's a very good system the way it works. Basically, the council will ratify the decision of the mayor. Having detailed information about the respective nominee and why they're qualified helps in that selection process. It's the duty of the mayor to appoint qualified, competent individuals to these committees. And if a council member does have a concern regarding any of these members or regarding the appointment, then they should take that up and discuss that with the mayor regarding their concerns. It's also important that we allow our city department heads to do their jobs. They're the most qualified in their specific area. It's not the job of the council to micromanage, but to provide oversight and act as the legislative body of the government. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mark Elif of Ward 5. Jana Schram of Ward 5, what are your top three priorities for the city of Carthage? And how do you plan to address these priorities if elected? You have two minutes.
Okay, the first one would be economic opportunities. I think that we can work with the CDC. Jeff Meredith is wonderful at bringing in new businesses, and Julie Reams is a great partner for him because she is totally trained in economic development. So I think that is one of the main goals, and Jeff has done a great job in his short time as the head of that, that department. And community well-being, I think it's a good thing to set back in place a community that feels like they're part of Carthage. Carthage right now, I hate to be negative on it, but we can be fixed. Because I think that thanking the community, realizing what wonderful things happen in our community is a big step towards that. Listening to your constituents as a, as a ward person and bringing forth their ideas into fruition as reality. And the next would be to preserve the unique history of Carthage. Everyone is proud to say they're from Carthage, and what we need to do is align the tourism with economic development, with the businesses, to make everything successful and everybody have the right resources to put in place and to know that they can count on their city administration and council members to help them along the way.
Thank you for that, Jana Schram of Ward 5. We now come back to Derek Peterson of Ward 1 for round three of questions. Mr. Peterson, our community has a very low stock of single-family and multifamily housing and a need for more childcare for families. These limitations do impact our workforce, and many businesses are struggling to fill positions within their companies. What do you think the city's role is to help solve these issues? And do you feel it's a top priority? You have two minutes.
So yeah, I do, I do think this is certainly a large priority, and I'd kind of go back to my last response where I, I mentioned the CDC and Jeff Meredith, and echoing, Ms. Schram is, is really a great leader there. is really a great leader there and doing some fantastic work, including looking at housing studies currently. And I think if we can obtain that data and then decipher which holes need to be filled there, that would be step one. So that would be really important. And I know, like I said, that that group has great leadership and they will find those holes that are needed. Now, moving to childcare, that's difficult, and I've experienced that in my own life. And that's a national problem. And when we think about Carthage, there's a lot of manufacturing. So another element to that becomes overnight childcare. So an additional difficult element to address. But again, I sound like a broken record, but leaning on some of these groups that are narrowly focused on that, such as GRO, G-R-O, Growth in the Rural Ozarks, Dr. Soriano and Stephanie Howard, great leaders there, are looking into finding needs there. Now, I would note though, at this very moment, I'm not certain that that falls within a core service of the city, which would necessitate, you know, massive funding. I think we need to get more data about where those needs are to do so properly, specific to Carthage. But ultimately, determining whether that's a task the city can take on and provide adequate funds for at this moment needs maybe to still be determined based on some research and data.
Thank you, Derek Peterson of Ward 1. Brandy Enzor of Ward 1. How will you ensure transparency in your fiscal decision-making and allocation of funds? And Brandy Enzor of Ward 1's response is as follows. In my time on council, the city has implemented measures to ensure more transparency with the public. We are able to livestream council meetings so that anyone who is unable to attend can view the meetings in real time or view them later to see what transpired. These links are provided on the city website with the agenda and minutes from each meeting so that the public is able to view them. We have also implemented the use of QR codes to make council packets available to those in attendance at meetings so they are able to view the documents we are reviewing as we review them. The custodian of records fulfills sunshine requests, and the city has provided documents requested by both the state auditor and attorney general when complaints have been issued. Thank you, Brandy Enzor of Ward 1. Lori Lees of Ward 2. What makes you the best candidate to be elected to the city council, and how have your past experiences prepared you for the unique responsibility? You have two minutes.
Like I said before, I'm not sure that I'm the best candidate, but I know that I love this community and I want to see things better. I want to see us all working together to make things better. I was thinking, and I apologize, I was looking at the question and I got sidetracked. My past experiences, well, I've had five children that have went through our school system here, and I've been very honored. I had four special needs kids, worked with schools with IEPs. We have the best school system that is imaginable. I know we see a lot of complaints on Facebook and things, but that's only because they care about our students and they are giving them opportunities that are amazing. So what I was saying is with that heritage that we have here, I want to preserve that, and I want to continue to see us honor our town and take care of it. And how, what gives me the means to do that? I've worked in every part of it. I've been a mother. I also work at the hospital. I manage other folks. I work with patient complaints. I deal with all aspects you deal with in a company. And I feel like that those give me a good baseline to start, to where I know how to listen and I know how to work hard to get on my job. I know how to work hard to get where I'm leading now. And I just am thankful for this opportunity to be here and to be able to maybe help make a difference in Carthage, because I really believe that we have so much more to offer.
Thank you, Lori Lees of Ward 2. Dustin Edge of Ward 3. How would you approach budgetary decisions and what priorities would you have in allocating city funds? You have two minutes.
I think it starts with open dialogue to figure out exactly what we need to accomplish in any given budget year. And really, at that point, it becomes prioritization. You know, you have absolute needs. You need to fund the salaries for the year and maybe equipment that is absolutely needed. And then beyond that, those become wants and nice-to-haves, and those become difficult conversations and maybe some cuts that may need to happen. But ultimately, I think it boils down to open dialogue and within the full council and the different department heads that are asking for those funds.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Dustin Edge of Ward 3. Robin Blair of Ward 3 as well, who could not be here in person. Excuse me. How would you propose to fund and implement the city's infrastructure needs such as roads, utilities, and bridges? And her pre-written response is as follows. As soon as I pull up the correct page, my apologies. The question five, there it is. Okay. I've served on the Public Works Committee with Zeb Carney over the past two years and really respect his ability to secure state and federal funding, including matching grants for infrastructure improvements. I know Mr. Carney will take full advantage of potential funding opportunities like the bipartisan infrastructure deal that came out of the Biden administration and working with our local representatives Jill Carter and Cody Smith. If we can't secure funding for big needs like the North Garrison Bridge, we may need to ask voters whether they prioritize the bridges enough to fund them with a tax. And that was Robin Blair out of Ward 3. Tom Barlow out of Ward 4. What are your top three priorities for the city of Carthage and how do you plan to address these priorities? You have two minutes.
Excuse me, as I mentioned, for instance, on the North Garrison Bridges, there's certain things that are our responsibility, and I believe that financial and fiscal responsibility is a top priority of ours. Difficult decisions, but we've got to do that. It won't be my decision to make, it will be ours. It's not me trying to share my responsibilities, that we've got to work together cohesively. And working together cohesively is one of my top three concerns, quite frankly. Over and over and over, I've been on a mission to listen and just, I've got so much to learn, dry sponge, and asking people to talk to me. And I've had people, I sought out people that I knew in my ward that lived in the ward, but also asked them to send out feelers and publicly stated that I'd like people to get with me. Over and over and over, people talked about how fractured our city is now, that it didn't used to be like that. That's not me trying to assign blame, that's me just analytically stating it's hurting, it's hurting us, and it's unbecoming of our fair city. And person after person after person says we want to get back to a more becoming state of functioning that is becoming of Carthage. So the third pillar is ethical behavior. Now, folks, I'm like, one minute, 30 seconds. I'm a Will Rogers boy from Oklahoma. I never met a man I didn't like, but there's been some things taking place that have not been ethical, some things. This body works very hard and does a lot of good work, but if we allow unethical behavior anywhere, it's going to have fractional divisive and demoralizing effects, it's unbecoming of our city, and we won't be as successful as a cohesive body, governing body.
Thank you very much, Tom Barlow of Ward 4. Mark Eliff of Ward 5. Each year during the budget process, more money is requested by our city department heads than the city can fund. Typically speaking, there are more needs than there are funds. As an elected official, how will you decide funding priorities within the city? You have two minutes.
The process of the budgeting that we have right now is very well organized, and it's also very public. First requests are submitted to the appropriate committee. Example, Public Safety receives a rolling five-year capital request. It's broken down by year from the police department and the fire department. After that, those requests are sent to the city administration where they receive all the capital requests from each department head. Then those requests go to the budget committee, with which each member sees all these different requests. Discussions held, priorities are reviewed overall. Priorities can also change throughout the year. That's why it's important to have a very knowledgeable budget committee and work closely with the city administration. Some of the requests may be cut out completely, they may be deferred, they may be modified. Hearings are then held with presentations made to the budget committee, and all the council members as well as the public are invited and also encouraged to attend. At this point, the council person may ask the budget committee why something's being funded, why it's cut, why it's modified, anything like that. When estimated revenues and fixed expenses are determined, then the amortization of the capital request can be added in. Now, certain payments or purchases can only be made from certain funds. Here's an example. Some salaries are paid out of special funds. For example, recycling center, the salary is paid out of the public health fund. 50% of fireman's salary is paid out of the fire tax. Generally though, salaries are paid out of the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark Eliff out of Ward 5. Janice Schramm also out of Ward 5. How would you approach budgetary decisions and what priorities would you have in allocating city funds? You have two minutes.
First of all, I wish I'd written down my answers in cinnamon. It'd be a lot easier than doing this on camera. So, thank you. I think the budgetary needs, we have department heads that are professionals and know what they need. We would first have to look at where we could squeeze some funds out of one area into another, and then, you know, of course, we would have to look at grants and other funding. But the biggest picture is we need to look at our long-term goals for the city, and are you asking for a want or a need? Have we given too much to one department where another department is deficient? And we just need to have open conversations where budgets lie and that you're getting the adequate funding. And another thing I think we need to do is take a citizen satisfaction poll to see if what we're thinking as the council is a need and the citizens think otherwise. And we could base that survey that we would take with our citizens on other like towns and see if we are competently completing the projects the citizens want done and not just what we feel is a city that we need to do. We need to listen to our citizens. And in doing these questions, I've talked with people at City Hall, the chamber, past city council members, people from chambers from other areas, and city managers from fast-growing communities. I want to bring in a wealth of knowledge to what we need, and I don't have to recreate the wheel where there's a budget. I can look at other cities, other communities, and see how they've done to be successful for their citizens.
Thank you, Janice Schramm of Ward 5. We're now moving on to our fourth round of questions here, and we'll be starting with Derek Peterson of Ward 1. Derek Peterson, what is your long-term vision for Carthage and how do you see the city evolving under your leadership?
Yeah, thanks. So really, my hope from a fundamental perspective would be keeping the core services, police, fire, streets, et cetera, at an elite level and maintaining those for generations, but largely also involving economics. I think the best stimulator and growth of the city as a whole will be driving new business, strengthening and growing existing business, and that then touches every other indirectly or directly, touches various other areas of our town that are only bolstered. So really, I think a lot can be hinged for the long-term success of Carthage based on economic growth. But ultimately, it is my goal and dream to see Carthage continually, or continue to flourish, not only economically, but continue to be the close-knit, family-friendly, you know, everything that I think we're all here because we love about Carthage. Keep that in place with all systems functioning at a high level.
Excellent. Thank you, Derek Peterson of Ward 1. Brandy Enzor also of Ward 1. What would be your plan to collaborate with other local agencies such as the Chamber, Vision, Hispanic Connection, and other nonprofits to address common challenges facing Carthage? And Brandy Enzor of Ward 1's pre-written response is as follows. All city boards have liaisons that report to the council. The Chamber and Vision Carthage report to the council on a quarterly basis, as well as the Carthage Economic Development Corporation. Council liaison reports and the quarterly reports allow council members to remain informed of what, of happenings within each organization. Organizations such as Hispanic Connection present at the committee level for permissions to hold events in the parks and to ask for things like road closures. The Crisis Center has expressed their hope to help low-income and the homeless population through new initiatives. By listening to these agencies and providing help from the city in the form of usage of resources such as the parks or working together to coordinate citywide events such as Maple Leaf, this strengthens our working relationship, which in turn will strengthen Carthage. That was Brandy Enzor of Ward 1. Lori Lees of Ward 2. What is your long-term vision for Carthage and how do you see the city evolving under your leadership? You have two minutes.
I believe growth to our community is essential. It would be a great asset. And in order to do that, we need to maybe go outside of our own world, go outside of your own ward, look at those areas, and look what needs to be done. And I know this sounds a little low-level of some things we could talk about here, but even making it, what Vision Carthage is doing, making our community prettier, we're going to have, we're going to have more people want to be a part of our community, but there's a lot of places that look pretty ugly. And of course, I live over in my ward, too, and if you drive around over there, it isn't the best-looking neighborhood. Great people, but with some encouragement. We had a city block, we had a block cleanup one Saturday several years back, and a couple people started working out in their yard, and it just took fire. The whole neighborhood was working, and then everybody was helping each other clean up their yards. And it was just a beautiful thing to see, but I think that the growth of our community will also depend on us making our community look more presentable in every aspect. But my main goal would be, to start with, would be to work on our entry level, our entry points. I saw a video on YouTube of a guy doing tours at different places, and he did one on Carthage, and we looked gross because he didn't see the beautiful homes, the beautiful courthouse. He just saw the entryway in, and that was a beep beep, and he was gone. And it just made me sad because we have so much more to offer. So I know that's the basics, stepping back that far, but in doing that, we can make this community grow, we can make the community get better.
Thank you, Lori Lees of Ward 2. Dustin Edge of Ward 3. What would be your plan to collaborate with other local agencies such as Carthage Chamber, Vision Carthage, Hispanic Connection, and other local nonprofits to address common challenges facing the city?
Well, as a current member of the Chamber as an individual, I plan to continue that relationship. Going to those after-hours and the morning coffees are great opportunities to mingle and learn what those challenges that are, local businesses are facing. And then I believe we need to continue those engagements with those partners that we have and have the, I know it was mentioned that we have regularly scheduled meetings in a previous answer that was read there, but those are our reports that are read to the council. Maybe we need to have a quarterly meeting with those actual groups that's set aside outside of a council meeting to open up those lines of communication and really learn what their needs are, what they're working on, not just through a liaison, so that each council member has an opportunity and an insight to those intricate details. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Dustin Edge of Ward 3. Next is Robin Blair of Ward 3. What are your top priorities for the city of Carthage and how do you plan to, how do you plan to address these priorities? And Robin Blair of Ward 3's pre-written response is as follows. Citizens in Ward 3 have been clear with me about their priorities. First, they want ordinances enforced more consistently. We need to ensure proper training and support of our public safety and public works departments. Secondly, citizens want the conflicts over the past year between the city, Carthage Water and Electric, and citizens to be resolved. We have to improve our communication and systems within the city among our various departments and along with the community. And finally, infrastructure is a big And finally, infrastructure is a big challenge in Carthage. We need repaired bridges and additional sidewalks to ensure safety. I've been on the Public Wards Committee and have seen up close all the funding challenges we have with infrastructure improvements. This is going to take federal, state, and city support. That was Robin Blair of Ward Three. Tom Barlow of Ward Four. Each year during the budget process, more money is requested by our city department heads than the city can fund. Typically, there are more needs than there is money. As an elected official, how will you decide funding priorities within the city?
I will do my best to encourage us together cohesively, have I said that before? To make those difficult decisions with safety first and then prioritize after that. Not trying to oversimplify a complicated question, but we need to also make certain that our expenditures, budgeted expenditures, match or are a little under our revenue rather than being overextended. It's our responsibility to do that. Now, if we have an extra amount, we don't want a huge whole extra amount because we need to be spending it on our fair city and its people. But I'm concerned about, and it's a difficult thing, and she talked about, I think Robin talked about the complexities of it. And it's a difficult thing to make it all happen and so many millions of dollars and so many responsibilities. But I'm concerned about risking passing a budget where the money is not there, and then throughout the fiscal year, we try to find ways to creatively make it happen and move this there and that there. It just needs to be done right, and that sounds easy. It will be difficult. It will be a challenge, but it's our responsibility.
Thank you, Tom Barlow of Ward Four. Mark Eliff of Ward Five. What is your long-term vision for Carthage? And how do you see the city evolving under your leadership? You have two minutes.
Carthage can be the best community for our citizens to live, work, and play. We work to assure safety and job opportunities for our citizens. It's got to be accomplished as a team, not by individuals. Servant leadership is the key to success.
Thank you very much, Tom Barlow of Ward Four. Oh, excuse me, sorry, Mark Eliff. My apologies. You guys caught me while I was drinking water. Janice Ram of Ward Five. How will you ensure transparency in your fiscal decision-making and allocation of funds? You have two minutes.
I'm big on transparency. As you can see, as I ran my Facebook page during this election, I put issues out there, let people know what's going on. I've said it at so many committee meetings, trying to learn this, and I'll tell people what I've learned and what they should do. I think transparency really starts, too, with people attending the meetings. So many people feel like they're not able to go to a city council meeting. This is your city council. We work for you, and you need to know that what you want matters to me. And all I've heard lately is the discourse in town and that we're not the Carthage we used to be. I want to make sure that I'm listening to you and that I represent the people of my ward, and you are free to come in and talk to the council. You are free to come to talk to me, to contact me. If it's an issue to you, it's an issue to me. And I really think that the tool of my Facebook page has been wonderful in me getting out there and telling people what I've done, what I continue to do, and what I need to do. And I will use all my resources available to work as best I can to represent you as a citizen of Carthage.
Thank you very much, Janice Ram of Ward Five. We're now going to enter our fourth round of questions here, starting with Derek Peterson of Ward One. Derek Peterson, how would you approach budgetary decisions and what priorities would you have in allocating city funds?
You know, this, much like Tom said, this is not to oversimplify what otherwise is a pretty complex question, but I really do think it comes down to essential pressing emergent needs versus wants-desires. Now, also like Tom said, that brings into play some really difficult decisions. There's a lot of stuff that I want and that we all probably collectively want that the means may not be there for, and those are challenges that we have to take or will face. But ultimately, I feel like prioritizing our core services of streets, fire, public works, am I missing any? Yeah, police, fire, public works, parks, et cetera, they are almost certainly going to fall into the needs category. Now, that has to be determined based on the specific task we're talking about, but ultimately, long and short, I think it comes down to a thorough assessment of needs versus wants and following that accordingly.
Excellent. Thank you, Derek Peterson of Ward One. Next, we have Brandy Enzor of Ward One. Brandy, what makes you the best candidate to be elected to the city council? And how have your past experiences prepared you for this responsibility? And her pre-written response is as follows. I love serving our town. I dedicated time to reading my council packets prior to the council meetings to make sure I understand the issues that come before the council so I can cast informed votes that affect the city. As your Ward One councilperson, my job is to serve as an advocate for all of Ward One's residents. This means that when citizens contact me, I make every effort to find the answer, and I make sure to follow up with them or put them in contact with someone who can help them if that is an issue or if it is an issue that is outside the scope of what is allowed by a council member. Being on city council is a huge time commitment. Each council member serves on two committees as well as serving as a liaison to the city board. I am currently serving as the chairperson for the Public Service Committee, Services Committee, that oversees the projects at the parks and recreation department as well as the new tourism director. I serve on the Public Works Committee, which helps plan for things like roads, sidewalks, lot splits, bridges, and even waste removal. I am also the board liaison to the Carthage Public Library. Council members attending their committee meetings is vital. The committees are where the groundwork for any city business is laid and is the starting point for the majority of issues prior to bringing them before the council. I make every effort to attend my committee meetings, and my schedule is planned around the committees I have with the city. Thank you, Brandy Enzor of Ward One. Next, we have Lori Lees of Ward Two. Lori, how do you propose to fund and implement the city's infrastructure needs such as roads, utilities, the North Garrison Bridges, so on? You have two minutes.
Of course, roads have been a big concern to everyone, I know, especially with all of the work that's been going on for the gas lines. But I know the streets department, they are working on all of this, and even in our meetings, they have mentioned what they do and how they roll to different areas, and they measure the depth of all of that to make everything, to make sure that the roads are taken care of. I do, my question was, and this is a question that I don't know the answer to, and that one of the questions I would question is, you know, I know Spire is going around doing the roads and fixing them-ish, and my question was, what responsibility do they have at making those look a little bit better and not leaving them in such bad shape that our city, because our city can't fix everything. I mean, they've got these big squads coming to town and doing these tear-ups. So, I think that was something that was my question. And of course, we couldn't function without our city utilities, without our support services and all of that. So, we have to work together and come to decisions that are best for the whole community. And on the bridges of North Garrison, I actually live over on that side town, as you know, and the bridges are, have always been a big concern for years to come. I mean, and they have a great heritage of being there for, you know, a part of our community. They're the scary bridges. I used to close my eyes when my mom would drive over the bridge when I was a little girl because they were so scary. And we need to seek what we can. There has to be some, because of the bridges and the heritage of those bridges, there has to be some kind of funding that we can seek to support those. Like Tom said, we're talking tens of millions of dollars, and we need to keep that avenue. There are a lot of people that use those bridges, but we also want those people to be safe. And so, we have to look at what we need to do to take care of that and preserve it.
Thank you, Lori Lees of Ward Two. Dustin Edge of Ward Three. It is important the city provides essential public services efficiently. How would you ensure this continues? You have two minutes.
I keep going back to improved communication, and really, I think that's vital for this piece. With improved communication, we know what citizens want and what those departments need, and as those needs change, we can pivot accordingly and then provide even better services that are meeting those changes and needs. And that open dialogue, again, I think that is vital. And quite honestly, I can answer every question with that, to be blunt. We need better communication with the council, with the department heads, and from the community, ultimately. We need to know what every person in every ward would like to see so we can get that collective voice. And then ultimately, with the right department heads in place for, you know, police, fire, parks, public works, streets, water and electric, similar to what Derek answered, you know, with those leaders in place, if you have the right people, all you have to do is equip them with the tools to do their job and essentially stay out of their way. Let them do their job. They're the experts in that field. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that, Dustin Edge of Ward Three. Robin Blair, also of Ward Three. How, what makes you the best candidate to be elected to city council? And how have your past experiences prepared you for this unique responsibility? And her answer is as follows. I bring my professional training as a clinical psychologist, my work experience from the nonprofit sector and higher education, and my lived experience of raising a young family to the table. My job is to help people access and learn and lean into their strengths and resources as well as to find solutions to their challenges. My skill set is well-suited to serve the city, as I have shown over the last two years. Further, I think some continuity in candidates helps stabilize the council and provides some institutional knowledge compared to getting five new members every year. I also believe my clinical training and temperament matters especially right now. While I don't claim to be right in all my thoughts and decisions, I do work hard to be level-headed, reflective, and respectful in discussing concerns of citizens and council members. That was Robin Blair of Ward Three. Tom Barlow of Ward Four. What is your long-term vision for Carthage? And how do you see the city evolving under your leadership? You have two minutes.
I hope to influence under our leadership the ability to deeply appreciate and hold on to our deep and rich heritage, our history, and yet look forward cohesively. I'll try to make that my last time. When I say cohesively, I'm talking about all sorts of groups within the city, working with, from outside looking in, I'm going to embarrass her, but our president and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, before I was getting this involved with thinking it was more imminent that I was going to join, she hit the ground running, kicked it in gear, and I love it. And I think more exciting things are to come. Conexión Hispana. That's the name of that organization. We might call it Hispanic Connection, but I'd like everybody here to practice just a moment saying Conexión Hispana. Conexión Hispana, two words. We can do that and show them respect and appreciation for the tremendous contribution they are making to our community. And when, and I say they, it's really us, but when I'm talking about a specific group, the Hispanic businesses, I know that the Conexión Hispana has got goals for giving them tools to increase their businesses. Who wouldn't want that? For their success, it becomes Carthage's success. And I can tell you as a principal, Hispanic families are just, they've been phenomenal, just such a blessing to work with, and the devotion to familia and the support is wonderful. So, I'm grateful for the Conexión Hispana and what you are doing and the amazing, exciting things they've done in three years.
Thank you, Tom Barlow of Ward Four. We'll be moving on now to Mark Eliff of Ward Five. Our community has a very low stock of single-family and multifamily housing and a need for more childcare for families. These limitations do impact our workforce, and many businesses struggle to fill positions within their companies. What do you think the city's role is in helping solve these issues? And do you feel it is a top priority? You have two minutes.
Housing is definitely a shortage and has been a shortage for many years. I think there's several reasons for this. Cost of building goods, we have supplies, cost of development, lack of developers, and those are just a few. I think one way the city can help is working with the developers on their infrastructure costs, that the developers will incur while they're trying to develop an area. An example would be a special taxing district. This would involve roads, water, sewer hookup, electrical hookup, and fiber. A partnership between the city and the developers would be a good way to begin. Childcare is another area that's always been an issue, mostly to the high cost of daycare as well as lack of workers. In fact, 40-some-odd years ago, that was a problem for us when we had our kids trying to find childcare. So, it's nothing new. It's just an ongoing problem, unfortunately. Two years ago, this exact same question was brought to this forum and to the candidates at that time. We do have groups, Grow Carthage, Kew Brook's Healthcare Foundation, and others, just to mention a few, that are attempting to address the daycare issue. Between the private sector, nonprofits, and businesses, possibly a viable option and a solution can be obtained. I don't believe the city, it's the city's responsibility to provide childcare. It is possible, though, to help these organizations through grants and other funding sources passed through the city to other organizations from state and also federal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark Eliff of Ward Five. Janice Ram of Ward Five as well. To ensure, it is important to ensure the city provides essential public services efficiently. How would you ensure this continues? You have two minutes.
I think that we need to support the public services. We have a great service in our Carthage Water and Electric award-winning. I think we need to leave them alone and let them do their job. Yes, we have liaisons that can report back. They've done a fantastic job, and I think that they should continue to do that. We are so proud of them. I think that we have a lot of department heads that do their job efficiently, and I think that the public services, when we put people in place and we listen and we support, is the best thing we can do as a council.
Excellent. Thank you for that, Janice Ram of Ward Five. We are now going to enter our final round of questions, and for this round, you will have one minute to speak and one minute only. And for this round, really, the question will be the same across the board, and that is, you have one minute for any final comments you would like to make and your final elevator pitch, so to speak. And so, we're going to start off with Derek Peterson of Ward One. You have one minute, sir.
Forget to it. So, yeah, I believe I have a very uniquely qualified background with my undergraduate degree in business. I went to law school and then practiced law in Arkansas in business and real estate-related matters. Everything I did centered around a contract, which is, has a lot of overlap into City Hall and interpreting certain things. I really just think that citizen engagement in this forum like this and seeing all these people here is what's going to really benefit our city long-term, and I want to be a conduit to that city engagement in City Hall, not only for my ward, Ward One, but the city as a whole. So, I'd appreciate your vote on April 2nd, and even if it's not for me, go vote. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Derek Peterson of Ward One. We're now moving on to Brandy Enzor of Ward One. Her comments are a little lengthy, so I will do my best to get as much of it in, in one minute as I can, and this is for Brandy Enzor of Ward One. I believe the top priority is making sure citizens are able to understand city processes and know how to access information. I have been an advocate for educating the public on council processes by using the time given to me on the agenda to explain what will happen next to those in attendance so they understand what the process is with an issue. I've also encouraged the city to be more transparent through the use of QR codes that provide provide a link to the council packets so that those in attendance will be able to follow along with what we are discussing on the agenda. I would like to see tutorial videos on the city website that walk citizens through council processes and provide education on how to access information that they legally have access to. It is encouraging to me that so many individuals are taking an interest in what is happening in the city and I would like to continue to help all citizens understand city council processes as I work with the city to plan for the future of Carthage. That is all. I've started to read the next answer. We're now moving on to Lori Lice of Ward Two. You have one minute to speak. Any final comments slash final elevator pitch? Lori?
Thank you, Julie, for this also tonight. Thanks, everybody, for coming because it shows how, how much you all want to see what's happening in our community and be a part of it. And I, I think right now, I think working as a community and I think my biggest goal would be to, they tease me at work and tell me that I'm the ever-positive person and I am, sometimes to a fault, but sometimes you need that ever-positive person in your presence to help be a good balance to some other, other areas. So I will do my best and work hard for our community if, if I am elected, which I think I am, you know, I'm not, no one's opposing me, but I know, but I just want to say that I just want to see our community. I want to see it look better. I want to see it like I remembered some of the things as, as I was growing up as a child. I want my grandkids to see it. I, when I'm gone, I want this community to still be thriving and doing the things that we do.
Thank you, Lori Lice of Ward Two. Dustin Edge of Ward Three, you have one minute. Any final comments slash final elevator pitch?
I do need to add to the introduction. I fail to mention my education background. I do have my bachelor's in business administration as well as my master's in business administration for Pittsburgh State University. My background, I, I have experience in the banking industry and have spent 13 years in the financial services industry. Right now, I actually work with contractual agreements, process improvements, and again, budgeting for a company with over $2 billion in revenue on an annual basis. I, I wholeheartedly want to serve this community. This is, in my opinion, this isn't something that you just do half-heartedly. This is something that I truly am invested in and that is also why you will see my name first on the ballot for Ward Three at election time. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for those comments. Next, we have Robin Blair of Ward Three and I am going to read from her original answer for this question. My name is Robin Blair. I live in Ward Three with my husband and two young children. I initially ran for city council two years ago because I wanted to support the many family-oriented initiatives that were already in motion, including park renovations. We moved the area in 2019 for the schools and I was immediately impressed with the community engagement that the city has to offer. I value public service and enjoy working with others who care about our town as well. I want to continue working on projects to improve the lives of citizens that, and that attract and to attract other families to the area so that our city has a vibrant future. That was Robin Blair of Ward Three. Tom Barlow of Ward Four, you have one minute. Any final comments slash final elevator pitch?
Yes, I came from Oklahoma, but I'm positively Missourian. I even root for Mizzou. I'll have you know, unless they play Oklahoma. But point being, I have fallen in love with life here. I'm a Carthage Tiger. I am blue and I love this place. I love the people and I have a heart to serve. Very likely not going to be perfect at it, but my heart's in the right place and I want to get better. Look forward to hearing from people to help me toward that end. Thank you.
That was Tom Barlow of Ward Four. Mark Eliff of Ward Five, you have one minute. Any final comments slash elevator pitch?
Again, Julie, would like to thank you in the chamber for hosting this. It's appreciated. When I ran for the council two years ago, I thought, well, this will take a little bit of time. It takes a lot of time and you get out of it what you put into it. So if you're willing to do this, be willing to put in a lot of time and listen and work and it's very worthwhile. Appreciate everyone that was here tonight in the comments and just again, would also say, please go out and vote on April 2nd. Thank you.
That was Mark Eliff of Ward Five. Janice Ram of Ward Five, you have one minute to make any final comments or slash elevator pitch.
Hey, Dustin, I also have my MBA. I forgot to mention that. So I'm a leader, I'm a problem solver, I'm an out-of-the-box thinker, I'm a team player. And I just think that I can see a big picture to lead a cohesive city council, work for my constituents. And you need to remember, past behavior is a predictor of future behavior. So when you look at voting and who listens to you as a citizen, please keep that in mind when you're voting. I am for you. I'm standing up for Carthage. Thank you so much for having me here tonight.
Thank you, Janice Ram of Ward Five. And that concludes our candidate forum for tonight. Thank you all for being here on the side of the voters and also on the side of the candidates. We appreciate your time. And a big thank you to Carthage Water and Electric again for hosting. We really appreciate the space. And a massive thank you to the Carthage Chamber President, Julie Reims. Thank you all. Now, I have no authority to say this, but I'm sure if you had questions for the candidates, I imagine they would be willing to speak to you. But thank you again for being here and drive safe.